Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Board of Education. The Board of Education is interested in encouraging members of our, of the community to share their ideas, comments, and questions. Public participation opportunities will be available at the beginning and the end of this meeting, and as stated in Board policy, no person shall speak for more than three minutes, and each period of public participation will be limited to thirty minutes. If you have any questions or concerns regarding matters on the consent agenda, through the Items for Discussion and Action, Items 1 through 4, it may be important for you to utilize the first public participation opportunity. Of course, you can always send your questions, feedback, comments to us through our email account, which is B O E at FarmingdaleSchools.org. Questions will be shared with members of the central administrative team, who will respond in a timely fashion. During special meetings, it is the policy of the Board of Education that public participation is limited to topics on the agenda only. Thank you for your anticipated courtesy and cooperation. In the event of fire and/or if you hear the fire bell, you must leave the building. We ask that you please use the nearest exit, which is in the back of this room, to the center and also to the right. Please stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. DeFandini, can we please have your monthly update?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Morales. I'm going to invite the Board, members of the Cabinet, our district clerk, to, to the audience. We have a brief presentation that is connected with but different from our typical celebrating excellence moment and a little video that I'd like to share with the Board of Education and the community. So if you could join me out in the crowd, that would be great. If everyone could just give us a couple of minutes while we set up, we'd appreciate your patience. Thank you. So typically, as part of our normal operating protocols, we start each of our board meetings with a opportunity to celebrate excellence, right? The great things that are happening in and around our schools. That is how we start all of our board meetings. This month's a little different, obviously as a result of the tragic bus accident. You know, certainly not the time right now to bring varied groups of constituents up here to thank them. Not to say that there's not wonderful work that's been done over the course of the first part of the school year, but we thought that today demanded something a little bit different than what you would typically expect. Today, we are going to be celebrating, from a thirty thousand-foot view, all of the heroes and the wonderful people that have played a part since the tragic accident on the twenty first of September, to get us from where we were in the immediate aftermath to where we were this past Friday when our students took the field on homecoming. The video that I'm about to share, again, just is a very small piece of thanks that we can share with all of the different constituents that were a part of getting us to that better place that we are at now, but it certainly doesn't tell the whole story. Spoke with the Board earlier, and we are committed to doing everything that we can to thank every organization and institution that has supported us, from the moment that the accident happened, first responders that were on site, the hospital workers that took care of us, Middletown School District, and all of the support staff that was there when they met us at the OCC, the actual college itself, who was wonderful in taking care of us, making sure that they kept, at that point in time, the immediate bay, and making sure that they provided a nice protective environment for us to operate in as part of that effort, the reunification effort when we returned back to the school, and every other counseling and support service that we've received. The plan is, over the course of the next couple of weeks, we are, I've already compiled a pretty comprehensive list of every organization that has helped us, and there are hundreds of organizations that have stepped in to help us, thousands upon thousands of people that have helped out in some sense or another to get us to the place that we're at today. Our plan is to have our students actually write thank you letters to the organizations, and we are going to, as a group, between myself, my team, the Board of Education, administrators, teachers, and other members of the community that were touched, and I'm telling you, there were some remarkable things that occurred, things that will deeply and personally connect us to the people that served us. The people at the hospitals were absolutely incredible from the moment that our students arrived, and the service that they provided to us, and the kind of personalized care that they gave us. I know, as an example, I'm going to point one person out, Dr. Olson's going to, I'm sure, taken that trip, having gone back and forth to the hospital on a number of occasions, is going to want to meet with those people again. So we're going to have packets of cards that we're going to be able to share with all of those respective people, and we are going to hand them off one at a time to each of those respective individuals, because it's important that we pay thanks to all of the people that got us to the place that we're at today. I want to share a little something that I wrote first, and then we're going to jump into, you know, what is about a seven-minute presentation slideshow that'll give you an understanding of, you know, some of the supports that were at play, but I did write something for tonight because I think it is important. Last night, at a Farmingdale Massapequa Men's Club meeting, the president of the organization reflected on the recent bus accident using an unsuspecting, centuries-old art form called kintsugi. Poetically translated to "golden joinery," kintsugi is a method for fixing broken pottery. Rather than repair broken ceramic pieces with camouflaged adhesive, hiding the cracks and burying the history, the kintsugi technique employs a special tree sap, lacquer dusted with powdered gold, silver, and platinum. Once completed, beautiful seams of gold glint in the conspicuous cracks of ceramic wares, giving a one-of-a-kind appearance to each repaired piece. This unique method celebrates each artifact's unique, each artifact's unique history by emphasizing its fractures and breaks instead of hiding or disguising them. The art of kintsugi often makes the repaired piece more beautiful and even stronger than the original. The heroes here in Farmingdale and beyond represent the best the world has to offer. Those on-site in the moments after the accident risked their own lives to save others. Others in the days that followed brought food in the form of meal trains. They visited our children and their families in upstate and local hospitals, and they wrote cards and loving messages. Our heroes traveled door-to-door to give free hugs, volunteered their time to counsel those struggling to understand their emotions, organized fundraising events, and raised money for families in need. When those five buses returned to Farmingdale High School, our heroes helped to reunite our students with their families. They decorated lawns, lit their porches green, and dropped off groceries. Schools far and wide wore green and made videos to support our Daler community. They wrote letters and hung signs. The nation laid its eyes on our community, and it marveled at its compassion and its loving nature. In a time of great divide, our heroes showed the world the power of unity. Our heroes are the golden lacquer dust that is holding this once-broken community together. It is not any single act or gesture, and it is not any one person's noble deed, but instead, it is the culmination of thousands of small gestures that have been attended to with great care by thousands of heroes here and afar that have reaffirmed and revitalized our faith in humanity. Jeff, I'm going to ask if you can please play the video that was created by our own Shannon Shaw.
Have you ever felt like nobody was there? Have you ever felt forgotten in the middle of nowhere? Have you ever felt like you could disappear, like you could fall and no one would hear? So let that lonely feeling wash away, 'cause maybe there's a reason to believe you'll be okay. 'Cause when you don't feel strong enough to stand, you can reach, reach out your hand. And oh, someone will come running. And I know. To take you home. Even when the dark comes crashing through, when you need a friend to carry you, when you're broken on the ground, you will be found. So let the sun come streaming in, 'cause you'll reach up and you'll rise again. Lift your head and look around, you will be found. 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 There's a place where you don't have to feel unknown. And every time that you fall out, you're a little less alone. If you only say a word. Across the silence, your voice is heard. Oh. Someone will come running. To take you home. Someone will come running, to take you home. Even when the dark comes crashing through, when you need a friend to carry you, when you're broken on the ground, you will be found. So let the sun come streaming in, 'cause you'll reach up and you'll rise again. If you only look around, you will be found. You will be found. Out of the shadows, the morning is breaking, and all is new, all is new. It's filling up the empty, and suddenly I see that all is new, all is new. You are not alone, 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 you are not, you are not alone. Even when the dark comes crashing through, when you need someone to carry you, when you're broken on the ground, you will be found. So let the sun come streaming in, 'cause you'll reach up and you'll rise again. If you only look around, you will be found. You will be found. You will be found. You will be found.
So, I'm going to go back to where I started. It's not any one single act. It is thousands and thousands of people doing thousands and thousands of different things that have provided the level of support, and today's event, today's celebrating excellence is dedicated to all of the heroes that played a part in getting us to the place that we're at today. And again, we're not there, right? There are still students. I'm blessed to report out that all of our students are home from the hospital. There is not a single student left in any hospital, far or local, but that is not to say at all that our difficult times are over, but this gives us tremendous hope in what the future can bring here in Farmingdale. I couldn't be any prouder of this community. I couldn't be any prouder of the members of the Board of Education, who were wonderful from the very beginning, our administrators, our teachers, our support staff. Our community has just been remarkable from moment go, and we wouldn't be here where we are without you. So, again, a big thank you to all the heroes. We look forward, over the course of the next couple of months, connecting with each of those respective groups and actually showing our love and compassion towards them as we hand them cards from our own kids. Very excited for that opportunity in the next couple of weeks, but didn't want to let this, today's event, go without celebrating excellence as it pertains to those respective people. Thank you, everybody, for everything that you've done. Any questions, or the Board? Yeah, I know. My vantage point is actually better than your vantage point, because I got to watch you watch the video. I'm going to invite the Board back up on stage, just give us two more minutes to get set up, and we'll continue with the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
It was really quite touching. I'd like to open the meeting now for our first public participation session. Please be sure to clearly state your name and address when you come up to the microphone. The meeting is now yours.
Kathleen Gagin, 169 East Drive. I am second vice president of the Farmingdale Federation of Teachers, and this is...
I'm Cordelia Anthony. I'm president of the Farmingdale Federation of Teachers. We wanted to just come forward, and Paul, basically, you've done what I wanted to come up and say, which is just a huge thank you to the Board and to all of the members up on the stage for your support for the students, for the staff, for the teachers. Throughout this time, it's been difficult, as you can imagine, we've all been feeling it, but I just wanted to let you know from that Thursday evening at the high school and reunification that we just truly appreciate everything that you have done, just by your presence, whether, like you said, it was a hug, or just coming to stand in for a teacher who couldn't teach for a day. There's so many more things I could say, but we wanted to take the opportunity to publicly thank you for the support that you've offered, for just being there for the teachers, and I couldn't let the public opportunity pass by without saying that.
And then, I've spent a lot of time with you, all recently, between what happened last week up into homecoming. It was probably one of the greatest events that I've ever had an opportunity to be part of. Homecoming was more than a game, and it was thanks to all of you as well. So I personally wanted to thank you from the athletic side also, on what it meant to be an athletic coach on that field with all of you. And lastly, we have our annual Making Strides Walk on Sunday. We would be honored to have you join us, the Farmingdale Federation of Teachers, at the walk at Jones Beach at seven-thirty in the morning, sorry it's so early, Field Five. We have an F F T tent up, and we also wanted to open it up to the community. There are many children that need to get community service. We would love to have them come and walk with us, so feel free to join us. Thank you.
Thank you both. We appreciate that.
Tonight, you gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen are going to ratify a hundred-and-thirty-six-and-a-half million-dollar budget. I'm trying to come to grips with those numbers. That's an awful lot of money. I'd like to find out if there's some way that we can get a detailed breakdown of the district, kind of the table of salaries, breakdown of the schools, how many schools we've got, what the population of the schools are, how many grades per school, what the staffing at the schools are, kind of an organizational chart for the district. You know, the number of classes in each building, and then lastly, I have no idea what a youth council is or why they need six-hundred thousand dollars a year, if maybe somebody could answer that question. Thank you.
Hi, Bill. I don't know that we've ever been acquainted with one another. So, tonight, we're not actually ratifying the budget. Tonight, the Board of Education is basically approving the apportionment of taxes that is controlled entirely by Nassau County. So, last year in May was when the community actually voted on the budget itself, the budget was approved, and we're now at that point where we're having a conversation about the way in which the taxes are being apportioned across Nassau County, because there's a lot of factors that come into play regarding the actual levy itself and why taxes get distributed to one house versus another house. So that, that's the purpose as far as today goes. If you want to take a look at our website, Bill, there's a portion of our website under Business Services that has pretty much everything that you just asked for and way more than that. We provide a lot of information in the spring. We have a number of budget conversations with the community so that they can really get a detailed understanding of where all the money is going. You can look at it from a thirty thousand-foot view and take a peek at, you know, general revenue and expenditure, or you can get into the weeds if you want and go line by line, because every line of the budget is also on our website. As you start to peruse some of those documents under the Business and Support Service tab, Mr. Motisi, who's sitting right across from me, would be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have, after taking a look, it is a lot of information. It's a lot of information. But again, you can feel free to ask any questions that you would like. As far as the other portion of your question, which has to do with the youth council, youth council's been an organization that's existed in Farmingdale for the better of 70, 70-plus years. It's a program that provides a unique set of services to kids, the winter program, the summer program being some of those programs. They are operated independently by a separate board. They have their own governing policies and governing protocols, but they do support the students here in Farmingdale schools. The portion of the levy that you're referring to that's approved by the community each year, at least it has been since I've been with the district for the last 21 years, that is what helps to subsidize some of the costs to parents so that it doesn't cost parents as much money as it would if there wasn't a subsidy or a tax subsidy that goes into it. It makes the programs that the youth council offers more affordable to individual households for parents that want to send their kids to those programs. If you had more questions on that, I could be more than happy to answer it. Mr. Motisi could answer questions or you could always reach out to the youth council themselves because they are their own separate body.
Hello. My name's Matthew Probert, 111 Matthews Street, South Farmingdale, New York. I came to the meeting tonight to, I know we were thanking everybody, but I really wanted to thank Paul Defendi because I saw him a couple of times the past couple of weeks. I don't know you, but I think you were a real pillar and you've done a lot these past few weeks and I think you deserve a pat on the back too. And I have like a reflection book I read and the end of last week, it was a little reflection and I thought of you. And it's Philippines and it says, "Humbly regard others as more important than yourselves." And I think you really have done that these past three weeks. So that's what I wanted to tell you.
Thank you. I truly appreciate the kind remarks. I don't think I've met your acquaintance either, but it is very nice to meet you as well. I've said it before, I'll say it again, this is a special place. I'm lucky that I get a chance to lead a place where people care so much about what they do. Some of the things that happened around here were not because of things that I directed, but just because of the fact that people have a really beautiful heart in this community and they do some really great things. So proud to be a leader here in our schools and very blessed to have an incredible group of people sitting at this table and beyond that have done some remarkable work. But I do thank you for your comments. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Okay, we thank everyone that came up to the mic. May I have a motion now to approve the minutes from the September 13 meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 13, 2023 regular meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this past month?
Thank you, Mr. Morales. The board received and also read a number of emails from school boards and community members in the aftermath of the accident of September 21st, including from boards of education from William Floyd, Deer Park, Brewster, Seaford, North Babylon and Lawrence Schools, also from the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association and from a number of residents. The board received the announcement about the annual Making Strides Walk on October 15th and there was apparent concern regarding a private school bus route and then also a letter regarding food service program.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any board committee reports? All right, can I have a motion now to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 1A through G, 2A through C, and 3A through D be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Morales, if I might. Some of the people in the audience tonight might not have known, but that was your big moment right there. That was the approval of several positions for new staff members. So if you are in the audience by name, we have Jen Sapienza, E N L, Woodward Parkway and Howitt Middle School. Christopher Burns, Physical Education, Albany Avenue, Woodward Parkway and Northside. Kathleen Marini, Math AIS over at Salzman East Moore. You can stand up if you're out there. There you go.
We want to see your faces.
Elena Casenza, kindergarten, Woodward Parkway. And last, but certainly not least, Sarah Hughes, speech teacher over at Salzman East Memorial. Welcome to the Farmingdale family. Thank you, Mr. Morales.
Thank you and welcome again. Congrats to all of you. Big things are expected. Big, big things.
No pressure.
May I have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 tax levy?
I make a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolved that the following budget of necessary claims and expenditures for school purposes in the Farmingdale Union Free School District located in the towns of Oyster Bay and Babylon, State of New York for the school year July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024, in the amount of $194,297,69, is hereby accepted. Resolved that the sum of $106,396,721, being the amount to be raised by taxation for the portion of Farmingdale Union Free School District located in the town of Oyster Bay, County of Nassau, and the sum of $30,116,120, being the amount to be raised by taxation for the portion of Farmingdale Union Free School District located in the town of Babylon, County of Suffolk, for the school year 2023 to 2024, being levied upon the taxable property of said school district as certified to be by the Boards of Assessors for the school year 2023 to 2024 for the purposes specified within this resolution. I'm not done. Resolved that the Assistant to the Superintendent for Business of the Farmingdale Union Free School District, Town of Oyster Bay, Nassau County and Town of Babylon, Suffolk County, is hereby authorized and directed to file a certified copy of these resolutions with the Board of Assessors, Nassau County and the Town of Babylon, New York, after receiving finalized assessed values from the Departments of Assessment, Nassau County and Town of Babylon, and finalized equalization rates from the Office of Real Property Tax Services. Amount of assessed valuation apportioned base in the confines of Farmingdale Union Free School District, Nassau County and Town of Babylon being $8,739,528 and $12,863,587, respectively, and that the equalization rates for apportioning said tax levy to Nassau County and Town of Babylon, respectively, as recommended by the State Board of Equalization are .0015 and .0078, and that the aforementioned figures be placed in the file of minutes of the regular meeting of October 11, 2023.
That was fantastic, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Give a second. Okay, this will be a roll call vote. When I mention, when I call your name, please say aye or nay.
Mr. Morales?
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe Mr. Motisi wants to give you an update?
Hey, I'm sorry about that. Mr. Motisi, of course, I didn't want to steal your thunder.
That's quite all right. Thank you, Mr. Morales. As Mrs. D'Amico had stated, this motion does give the district the authority to transmit the final values over to the individual counties. Each year, the district awaits the final assessed values, the base proportions and the equalization rates that help distribute the taxes amongst the different taxing jurisdictions. I will be giving a much detailed, much more detailed explanation about how this whole taxing situation works at the October 25th Board of Education Workshop. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have right now regarding this motion tonight.
Any questions? All righty, thanks, Mr. Motisi. As I was saying, this will be a roll call vote and please say aye or nay when I call your name. We'll start with Mr. Giordano. Mr. Goldberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Lively?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucy?
Aye.
Mrs. D'Amico?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Motion carries. Can I have a motion regarding the NISBA Business Meeting Resolutions?
I make a motion to support the proposed resolutions recommended by the Resolutions Committee for Adoption and to support the decision of the Resolutions Committee for those resolutions that are not supported to be presented at the New York State School Boards Association Annual Business Meeting.
Any discussion?
So I was nominated to take the resolutions to the annual business meeting, which will be held on October 16, virtually. It's usually held at the convention, which is the same date, but they're going to do virtual as well as in person. I am honored to take our choices of resolutions to the meeting. And before I talk about that a second, I want to say that the New York State School Boards Association Area Director has stepped down. We had the opportunity as a board to nominate a candidate and I want to let the board know that Shamiz Desir from the Union Dale School Board has won the elections. We have chosen her to be nominated and she will be taking the position as our area director. And she will start in January and have that position for two years. So I just wanted to tell you the good news about our nomination. And at the resolution, I went to a resolution meeting and we discussed each resolution, those that were recommended and those were not recommended by the New York, New York, excuse me, Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association. I will bring our decisions as to the resolutions to our meeting, annual meeting on the 16th and use my judgment if there's much conversation about anyone in particular. Well, I know we discussed a little bit about our resolutions, but if I have any kind of concern or get new information, I'll use my judgment if that's okay with the board. I think knowing the board for a while, I can kind of use judgment as to what you guys would decide. So thank you for nominating me and I'll be glad to bring back the results after our meeting on the 16th. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Kathy? Thanks again. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open our meeting for the second public participation session. Again, please state your name and address clearly when stepping up to the microphone. Once again, the meeting is yours. All righty, thank you. Before I make a motion to enter into executive session, I just want to take a second to say a special thank you to our community. The last couple of weeks have been really hard for all of you, for all of us. I know there are people here in this room right now that have struggled since what happened back on September 21st. People here had their kids on those buses, some people here were on some of those buses. And over the last couple of weeks, we've heard some great tributes to Gina and Bee and many of us knew them. And for those that didn't know them, you got to know them the last couple of weeks. Gina was an incredible teacher. She was phenomenal. She was an inspiration. She was an inspiration to my four older kids, all of whom graduated from the high school through the music department, had great experiences at band camp, all had wonderful things to say about Gina. I met Bee as a chaperone back in 2010 and I became really friendly with her. And for anyone that served as a chaperone during band camp, Bee was the guiding light. She was funny, she was hilarious, she was friendly, she was caring, but she was a leader. When anything went sideways at band camp, Bee was the first one who snapped from being your grandma to being totally in charge. She was a dynamo during band camp and I was totally inspired by her, as I'm sure many of us were. It was hard to lose them and it's still hard, you know? Our kids have been phenomenal. The band did a phenomenal job this past Friday despite what I'm sure were heavy hearts. They performed their hearts out and they did amazingly. But we have to keep our eyes on them because kids tend to, you know, keep their feelings a little buttoned up. Keep your eyes on them, keep your eyes on each other. The one thing that I want to close with is for the last couple of years, this community has seemed a little at odds with each other, to put it mildly, right? There's been some dissension, there's been some anger, there's been some differences of opinion. And that's okay. And I think we lost sight of the fact that it's okay to disagree, right? It's okay to say, "I don't agree with what you're saying" or "I feel a different way." There's nothing wrong with that. But the one thing that I've seen and I'm sure that we've all seen since September 21st is this community has come together in ways that were almost unimaginable. I'm not a daler by origin, I'm a daler sort of by transplant. There are native dalers here who talked, who have told me that that's what this community is about. And despite the incredible tragedy of what our children had to persevere, what our teachers had to persevere, what the families of Gina and Bee had to persevere, we've come together. And we've come together in strength, in compassion, in empathy and in love. And it's been quite inspirational, I'm sure to all of us. So I hope that going forward, we honor the legacies of Gina and Bee by continuing that work. We're going to disagree, we're going to butt heads, we're going to argue. That's okay. But at the end of the day, we really are all dalers and that's what Gina and Bee were all about. And hopefully, that's what we can do to honor their legacies going forward. So with that said, I'd like a motion to enter into executive session.
I make a motion to enter into executive session on advice of counsel to discuss the employment history of a particular employee on a matter made confidential by state and federal laws in accordance with open meetings law.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody. See you soon.